Roll call, please. Councilmember Redmond?
Here.
Councilmember Collings?
Here.
Councilmember Sterns?
Here.
Mayor Protem Stackbluth?
Here.
Mayor Kluer?
Here.
Before we go to special presentations, I will give the mic over to Chief Gibson.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, I would like to introduce one of the newest members to the Mount Shasta Police Department. This is Amber Hobbs. She's our new on-call, part-time dispatcher. She's currently finishing up her training. Her and her husband Joe are both locals here. She is also one of our volunteer firefighters as well, so she's given a lot of time. So bring her in and introduce her to everybody. And I hope to have Officer Hopkins here at the next council. He just had conflict in scheduling today.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Welcome. For a special presentation, the first one's the proclamation for early literacy. Is someone here Karen? Yes?
Hello.
Hello.
How are you? Great to see you all again. And thank you for what you do for our community. Really appreciate it. If we haven't met, I'm Karen Potts, and I have the honor of being the executive director for First Five Siskiyou Children and Families Commission. Last week, we celebrated the 16th Annual Read Across Siskiyou Event. And Tessa, maybe your boys, one of the boys brought the book back. This proclamation is in arrears because of, I think, previous meeting there wasn't an agenda item, but we really appreciate your consideration to adopt this proclamation as a way of promoting the critical importance of daily reading with children in our communities. I have a packet of resources and information for you, and we all know that the best thing that we can do for our community is invest in children in the early years of their lives. Thank you.
Oh, hi. How are you? Can I give this?
And one of those ways is for you to consider supporting the Dolly Parton's Imagination Library. Currently, there are 136 children specifically in our zip code, 96067, who are getting monthly books from Dolly, thanks to generous donors in the community. We'd love to see all of the community partners, including our cities, to help support this effort by considering a contribution towards the Dolly Parton's Imagination Library for the children in our zip code. But beyond that, we thank you for your consideration to adopt the proclamation for Read Across Siskiyou and your continued support of investments in children and families in communities, in our communities, critical to the well-being of Mount Shasta today and beyond. Thank you. And I'll pass on some of the books to share with children in your life.
Thank you, Karen.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, any questions before I read or comments? Okay, thank you so much. I'll read while you pass out. All right. Proclamation for Early Literacy, supported by First Five Siskiyou Children and Families Commission. Whereas, the ultimate goal of the First Five Siskiyou Children and Families Commission is that all of Siskiyou's children, from prenatal through five years of age, will be healthy, ready to learn, and supported in safe nurturing families and communities. And whereas, children in Siskiyou County, from prenatal through five years of age, have successful start in life through daily reading with supportive and nurturing families, caregivers, educators, and community leaders. And whereas, early literacy is the foundation for academic, social, emotional, and economic success, and therefore, the city of Mount Shasta hereby enthusiastically endorses daily reading, singing, and playing with children as a critical foundation for healthy development and lifelong success.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we need about this in? No? Okay. Thanks a lot. Thank you very much. All right. And next, special presentation is Pat Titus with Fire Prevention Collaboration.
Hey, Pat.
Hi, thanks. I've never done this before, but this was on my mind, and it's a different take on an old subject. So I thought I'd come to you and talk about it, and I really appreciate you letting me talk. I'll be very brief, so you can get on with your business.
Thank you.
I don't have a crystal ball, but I will tell you a little bit of my background, so I can speak from experience. Forty-three years in the fire service. I was the fire management officer here at Shasta McLeod Management Unit. I retired last December from the Governor's Office of Emergency Services as Assistant Chief, and I did 15 years as a Type 1 Operations Section Chief on an incident management team. So I've been to a lot of fires. I've worked with a lot of the retired chief, the new chief. I've worked with all these guys on fires, been to many fires around here. So I wanted to talk briefly about tonight is something that the city doesn't have own, but has ownership in. We, every time I'm in Alma over the last year, and I look this way, which all of you've probably done in the last year, what you see is a tremendous amount of dead trees. Well, they're starting to come down. If you've been on any of the trails, the 10-gallon trail, the Gateway System, it's becoming, in my experience, I've been on a lot of big fires around here where homes have been lost, that fuel loading eventually either gets removed or nature removes it. It burns. Okay? So that's probably going to happen at some point in the future. Five years from now, 10 years from now, 50 years from now. I don't have a crystal ball. I can't tell you when that'll happen. I will tell you that area, the fuel loading is heavy. It's a southwest aspect. It's a very hot slope. I've been to several fires up in that area that were small. So I want to give credit to the City Fire Department, the district, the Forest Service, Cal Fire. Over the years, they've done a fantastic job in this area, all around here, of stopping fires small. But that kind of fuel loading that's present up there, there was a fire a few years ago, Cory, I think you might have been on it, not far from Frank McBride, that wasn't that easy to stop, and it was about two and a half acres and some heavy, down-dead stuff legs up there. On the right day, we could have a very catastrophic fire right in our backyard. Does the city of Mount Shasta own any of that property? No, the Forest Service does. But it's not so much the area affected by the wildfire is my concern, and what I'm coming here to talk to you tonight is the economic impact it would make to the city of Mount Shasta. Okay? The Forest Service, Cal Fire, the city, they're all, I'm not here to talk about fuels management or hazard fuel reduction. That's the Fire Safe Council. The city's doing, on a program for that. There's lots of entities doing that. The Forest Service has done fantastic work in the Gateway Trail System with fuels reduction. They just did mastication back behind my house up off McLeod. So the entities are doing fuels management work. That's not the issue. That area up there is very hard to do fuels management work. Okay? It's under an LSR, Late Successional Reserve. It's very steep slopes. There's very few roads, other than the 10-gallon system roads in there, but above the Everett, that's pretty hard to do work up there. So I wouldn't anticipate. The Foresters will start to do something. They'll do some roadside work. They will do some something over the next few years, I'm sure. But we have to buy time, and what we've done is we've created this great trail system, which I enjoy thoroughly, and I'm sure most, a lot of us in this room do. But we, before, we've added thousands of people into a high-fuel-loaded area, fire area. That's a problem in my mind. Okay? So what do we do? We have the fuels. They got to take years to take care of the fuel loading, but we have all these people using that trail system, and you're going, well, what does that, how does that impact Mount Shasta City? Well, I'll tell you, I'm not even going to look at these stupid notes I wrote up, because I'm just going to talk to you all. If, like I said, I don't have a crystal ball, if you have a catastrophic fire up in that area, okay? One, the Trail Association has invested almost, probably over $2 million at this point, in grants and other funding to create a great trail system. If I'm a mountain bike rider or hiker, and that all burns up, do I want to come to Mount Shasta and go riding and hiking? Probably not right away. Probably not. Okay? Another point, that burns up, that type of fuel loading, it will be, it will be hard-pressed not to be a high-intensity burn, meaning it will burn everything. That much fuel loading, it will, my experience over the years, and I'm going to look over at Cory, and what do you think, it's going to burn hot up in there if, on the right day. So that little flood thing we had this winter, what do you think that would be like if that burns? That will be nothing. That flow would, I'm not a hydrologist, but I'm going to guess that if that burns, the flood that would come from that would definitely be coming right through town, all the way through town. Because I've been on debris flows with OES that were caused by fires. Fire starts, you get a heavy thunderstorm, you get something, and down comes the mud. So I'm not talking to you here today about doing fuels management or any of this. I want to stress to the city council and the city to help buy time so that you don't have fires in there. The Forest Service, there's lots of entities that have a vested value up in that area. The Trail Association, the city economically has a vested interest, right? The county has a vested interest by people coming to the county and spending money. Okay? SORA, the Siskiyou Outdoor Recreation Alliance, has a vested interest in that area. They have Grandura. How much money did Grandura bring to our town? Okay? And if that burns up, how are they going to do another bike ride? Who's going to want to come do that bike ride? The Fire Safe Council of Mount Shasta has a vested interest. There's lots of entities that have vested interest. So I've painted the picture. That's a really high-fire-threat area. If that goes, there's going to be economic impact, probably pretty severely, to the city of Mount Shasta if that happens. So what can we do? Well, fuels management's ongoing. That's happening. Taking care of hazardous fuels happening. I am promoting to the city of Mount Shasta, and maybe the fire department, get into a collaborative effort with the, and I've talked to John Harsh at the Trail Association and some others, to get into a collaboration with the Forest Service, Cal Fire, the Trail Association, SORA, the Fire Safe Council of Mount Shasta, to really focus the fire prevention messaging on that area. And what that would look like is maybe have some meetings where the websites for the city, for the Trail Association, for SORA, all through the Forest Service's fire-safe stuff, would be messaging, heavy-duty fire prevention messaging on all the webpages, including maybe the Chamber of Commerce downtown, right here when people come in here. Because there's really not that much. You have to hunt around. Cal Fire has fire prevention messaging, Foresters, but I'm talking all the websites. The Trail Association website would have, you know, "High fire danger when you're on. Please be careful with fire." You know, SORA would do the same. But it would take a collaborative effort, because I truly believe the Forest Service and Cal Fire, all these entities, are doing their best, but they cannot do it alone. They just can't. And so what I'm, what I'm asking the city is to get into a collaborative effort on fire prevention messaging focused on the Gateway, almost to about Bunny Flat area. And then the Forest Service, there's lots of opportunities for fixed signage, like they just put in a bunch of kiosks for the Gateway Trail System. There's new kiosks going in. Each one of those kiosks should have a fire prevention message in them. Each one. When someone comes to the chamber, there should be a fire prevention message right there at the chamber. Because that is the only way that I know, is to not have the fire start. Okay? That gives the Forest Service and some other entities, the Fire Safe Council and other entity, time to deal with the fuels problem. So really, that's my message to you is for whether it's Chief Burns or somebody working with the Forest Service and the Trail Association. And time is a little bit of essence here. I bike that all the time, and I hike that all the time. And now the trees are starting to lose their limbs, they're starting to come down to the ground. So each summer that passes, the fuel loading's only increasing up on that hillside. And I know from loving Mount Shasta, if I came here and I was sitting downtown having a cup of coffee, and I looked up and that's all black, that wouldn't really thrill me if I'm a tourist coming to visit our town. And it's just another take on the fire prevention message. So I'm asking the city council, Chief Burns, to work with the Forest Service, the Trail Association, SORA, and whoever else, to really ramp up a focused fire prevention message on this area in our, in our community. That's all I have, unless you have questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
No questions? Yeah, go ahead.
I've been trying to think of the numbers of different initiatives that are all happening at the same time. And I'm, in the summertime, with winds out of the south, if you go up after Memorial, people who are from out of town, who aren't on the bike trail system, but who are just camping, I'm thinking, I'd love your perspective on how much attention should be placed there. I mean, yes, permanent signage, messaging at the kiosks, but I suspect that most of the people that are on the trail system, most anyway, are mindful of not burning down the place that they love to hang out at, as compared to travelers who are coming through who, who may have a different perspective. I'd like to hear what you've got to say.
Okay, that's, that's, that's a good take, and I can only tell you from some fires I've gone on from experience. One, I do know the Forest Service added another prevention unit on this side of the hill, Forrest Koots, and he's really after them. He's out there. The Forest Service did have a ban on campfires in that area for quite a few years. It was a temporary ban. They are going in, I just talked to the fire management officer, to re-up that ban, and that is critical, so that fires wouldn't be allowed anywhere up in that area at all. And that was, they did have a decline in fire starts when they did do that. So I think that's going to be key, that the Forest Service continues to move in that direction. As far as the other trail users, there are a lot of very, people that are very aware of the fire danger and stuff, but in my experience, there's more people not aware. They come out of the city, and we have a lot of kids, I call them kids, young people, teenagers, that use that trail system. Teenagers do stuff. They go out there, they smoke weed out in the woods, they do stuff. I've been, I can't tell you how many fires I've been on from, from kids smoking pot out in the woods. So they get on their bikes, that's after school, they go up there and smoke a cigarette, and they do something. So I can't stress to you enough that the multitude of ways that a fire could start up in that area, I couldn't even name them all. I mean, I've been to the weirdest kind of starts you can even imagine. So I think heavy, and the Forest Service has been doing pretty good about it, really getting out there and meeting people face-to-face. But the signage out there is, is okay on the big roads, but there's not much signage out on the trail system. In fact, fire prevention signage on the trail system, there's none. And that's where the change, there needs to be more change. It needs to be in everybody's face all the time.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you for bringing this to us. I think we'll be working to get this on the agenda and hear from our fire department and make something happen. I appreciate it.
All right, no problem. Sorry to give you more work, Cory.
[laughing]
All right, thank you. Good luck.
All right, we'll be moving to public comment. We have a sign-in sheet that a few have signed on, so we'll go from that first, and then anyone else left in the audience or online that wishes to speak on something not on the agenda are welcome to do so. So for, oh, I think these are pertaining to specific agenda item numbers. Did you get that, Kathy? That there were? Okay, so first speaker is Phil Dietrich. Come on up.
I'm speaking on.
Okay, so we'll save that for that specific agenda item.
Rosalyn McCoy, I'm a resident of Mount Shasta. And the sound quality from the speaker in the back is still not very good. I would have hoped that over this time...
No.
Yeah, it's not, that I can't hardly hear it at all back there. From the speaker, I mean, you guys, for some reason, it's much better, but from the speaker, it's not good. The other issue that I really questioned was how much money did the city spend on the last election, or the last election? Yeah, that we had an issue on the ballot, just one issue, and $15,000 to $28,000 the city paid for that one issue, and why that wasn't rolled over for a situation where we had more things on the ballot. And it passed, and so the 1% was approved, and so that 1% should go for some of these issues of water and drainage, and not just more advertisement and giving it away to other organizations, but we need to use it for infrastructure and not taxes more. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosalyn.
Francis Mangels, resident of Mount Shasta since 1981. And I would like to put a diddle mark under what Rosalyn McCoy said. There's something funny going on, and we kind of do that. And I would ask the city council to pass a resolution so that instead of spending 25 grand and 30 grand on a special election, which could patch a lot of potholes and maybe get us another police officer or helper, or something like that, I'd like you to just put these special items, just put them with the regular election, so you don't have to go through the expense of having a special ballot, special election, special print, special this, special that, and wasting the money. You know, it can darn well wait for another eight months, couldn't it? You know, these things don't have to be on the ballot right when they pop up. And the other thing, the general, let's just call it gerrymandering of funds, you know, if you want to vote yourself an increase in salary, well, that's okay. Let's look at it. If you want to clean the pipes out of the sewer, well, that's what you're supposed to do. You're supposed to patch the potholes in the road with that 30 grand, or you're supposed to mend the cracks in the road, keep the water flowing, keep the pipes. Okay? You know, that's what you do, is to maintain the utilities of the company, I mean, of the city. You know, that, that's what I want to see. I don't want to see this, we'll switch it around here and switch it around there, and then we'll switch around here, and we'll tie it over there, and bring this in from over there, and bring that from over there, and pretty soon you can't tell where the money come, well, the money came from me. But you can't tell where in thunder the money's going after messing around with it. I'd like a resolution from the city council to put it in plain language. You can put it in a newspaper, you can put it online, but don't bury it in a paragraph somewhere and put it very clearly and plainly, you know, three lines could say it, where the money went. And it was for that. Please, please, please. You know, you treat us like ordinary people. Don't treat us like a gang of rabid monkeys. Okay? And one more in the last 10 seconds. I still see firebomb trees in the town that could light up very easily, and trees very capable of falling over wires and cutting off power to large sections of the city. Please do something about that. It causes accidents too. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak on an item not on the agenda? Hello?
My name is Simon. I'm a resident of Mount Shasta. We moved here in 2017. I'm an IT professional. I'd like to know why the website's non-functional. I have called your group to let you know that your certificate has expired, and someone goes, "Oh, I didn't know." I can't find data on your website. There are items that are outdated. Things are not being posted. There's no agenda for tonight's meeting. Your website's not keeping up. I don't understand why.
We'll be going over that in our staff comments this, this afternoon.
Super, that'd be great to hear. Also, it's springboarding on some of the issues. I've never seen a small city with as bad streets. I don't understand what's happening, but your master plan that you have on your website expired in 2018. There's no comments or anything about what we're going to do with our current lack of infrastructure from just our streets. I understand we're going to do wastewater. I've got that. You're going to talk about it. But what's happening? The streets are literally falling apart. You drive down Mount Shasta Boulevard, you go up Lake Street, and they're literally looking like, I don't understand what's going on. And I'd like to see that addressed some way, somehow. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else in the audience wish to come up and speak? And anyone online? All right, we'll be closing public comments, moving on to staff and council comments. Todd, would you like to start us off, please?
Sure. So obviously, there have been a lot of rumors floating around about a drainage impact fee report, and I wanted to address some of the concerns... report, and I wanted to address some of the concerns upfront, so maybe this will alleviate some of those concerns. So typically, when we finish a study, we don't bring it to council. I made the decision in this case to bring the drainage impact fee study to council to ensure that A, council reads it and understands the methodology behind it, and members of the public also get an opportunity to read it as well. So it's a, it's a report. We can't, as a city, as you all know, unilaterally pass a fee increase without public comment, and this is something that we were looking to get onto the March ballot, but it looks like we're not going to make that. We are required to have a hundred and thirteen day public comment period, and it was brought to my attention by one of our counselors that I should check in with our election clerk. I did, they have a municipal code ordinance that states that they need a hundred and forty-five days, so we needed the election consolidation paperwork in by November first. So what does this all mean? We have a fee report in front of us that says, you know, right now, there's a dollar a month fee for, you know, to pay for drainage infrastructure, and this report lays out what the company that we retained requires for us, you know, or suggests that we have to pay for the backlog of drainage infrastructure projects. This is all this is, it's informational, we're not going to get to this until it's election time, and there'll be three to four months of public comment period where you'll have the opportunity to state your case in front of council, and council will then make a decision on whether we move forward with any ballot initiative, you know, with the amounts that are listed in the study, a different amount, but that's all to be considered at a different time. So I just wanted people to know that, you know, that's what this is. This is purely informational, so we understand the methodology behind this, nobody's trying to move anything forward tonight, so that's it. Moving on to other things, we have a couple initiatives. We applied for a federal safe streets for all grant, and we were awarded a hundred and sixty-eight thousand. What that will allow us to do is perform a safety audit of the city of safe routes to school for kids, for areas that are problems for pedestrians and bicyclists, and other areas that are problematic overall for all users. And what that does is when we have that audit in place, it makes us more eligible for federal and state grants. So, so we've got that, and we can undertake that fairly soon. Many of you all know that the NEST was forced into receivership, you know, this past year, and we've had a number of meetings with the judge to see if we can force the old hospital into receivership. It was, the last week was the fifth hearing. I'm happy to announce that the old hospital is now in receivership and out of the hands of the owner. And, you know, the owner fought vigorously, so I wouldn't be surprised if there is an appeal, but right now, it's in our hands. The next issue is, we've talked about the enhanced infrastructure finance district and partnering with the county, and I presented the board of supervisors last week to get their resolution of intention to go along with ours. They decided to punt for a month. There were a couple of members who believed on the maps that we presented to them that we hadn't added a parcel to the west of the highway that they wanted. We added a parcel based on their description that's county-owned. Perhaps we've got the wrong parcel on there, but we're meeting with the two supervisors, or I'm meeting with the two supervisors next week to ensure that we've got everything on the map. For the landing itself, we're in continued negotiations with Kendrick Enterprises and trying to figure out how we get infrastructure put in at the landing and see if we can get that site developed finally after all these years. So, and finally, you know, there are a lot more things. If I went into all the details of everything we've got going on at this city, I'd bore you to tears, and this would be a very long meeting, but their negotiations are ongoing with the owners of what used to be the Crystal Geyser property, now One Shasta, for them to transfer their high-productive well to the city. It's at the right elevation to allow us to serve residents into the future, and in exchange for them transferring that deed, we would upsize the tank to ensure that we could also serve the One Shasta site. And I think we're pretty close. I think by the end of this week, we'll have a deal, and those are the main points, but that's basically where we are.
Thank you. Would you mind touching on the website?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, right now, we have a website that appears to be functional in that we have some links that are working. It's not, it's a shell. We have contracted, if you've been following city council events, with Civic Plus. They're in the process of migrating and updating our webpages, and they just haven't been able to move as quickly as we'd like. And so when it comes to Brown Act noticing, if you have a, you're required under the Brown Act to post council agendas on your website if you have a web presence, and since our accounts, our website is not working, in those cases, the Brown Act does not require you to do that. So in this case, there are a number of folks, many number of folks besides council, that have asked to be mailed agendas, emailed agendas as they come out, and, you know, there were a number of people that received those copies, including a number of the folks that were kind of stoking the flames over the weekend, and where it outlined in with the agenda, the issues with the website, and laid out, you know, the fact that we can't post, and we can't do businesses we'd like to, but that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other staff comments?
Thank you, just a couple of things. I sat down with Ken last week, and we came up with a plan to get five radar speed signs to put up in the five hotspots in Mount Shasta. These are going to be the, you're coming down the road, speed limit's twenty-five, they're going to be flashing your speed, it's a great attention getter. They also work as to do surveys for us, so when it's time to do street surveys, they're tracking the number of vehicles on roadways, they're tracking the speeds on the roadways, and so you should be seeing those here in the near future in some very high-speed spots such as Lake Street is one of the places to go on. And then just an update for our task force officer for the month of October, since we're just about the end of the outdoor growing season, they only seized one thousand one hundred and eight marijuana plants at seven sites. They seized over twelve thousand six hundred and seventy-nine pounds of processed marijuana, along with that, a hundred and fifty-eight thousand five hundred and two dollars in cash, over nine thousand dollars in gold, and an estimated between five hundred and seven thousand, or seven hundred thousand dollars in gold and jewelry that they've seized just in the month of October, yes, in Siskiyou County.
Siskiyou County.
Yes. So he's been extremely busy with them at this, because this is a time of year where a lot of money and a lot of drugs are hitting the freeways.
Thank you. Any other staff comments? All right, council?
Francis, you still here? I was gonna explain how our finances are really quite straightforward. All of our finances are in two buckets, the general fund and our enterprise funds. The general fund is comprised of taxes, sales, property, and hotel taxes. That's where all the money comes that goes into this bucket. Enterprise funds are water, wastewater, and as will be discussed tonight, drainage, and they are fee-based. You get a bill every month. A fee change is one of the things we'll be talking about. That is the extent of our budgets. That's how it works. Yes, there's more details under that, but it's relatively straightforward, and of course, we have an annual budget which is published, which we spend weeks and months on to make sure all the details are covered.
Can you keep the prop there for a second? I just wanted to add, something I saw on the Nextdoor post, or maybe it was the Facebook post, was that there was suspicion that the increase out of this bucket would pay for things out of that bucket, which is illegal. We cannot do that.
No can do.
If we raise fees for the drainage fund, it has to pay for drainage. The end.
Do we want to talk about the cost of running that election, or, yeah, creating and running that election?
Sure.
Having the county run that election for us, and the potential revenue? Should I do this? Okay. So this was well debated and discussed over months, the TOT tax increase. Mount Shasta is still at 10%. The move to 12% based on the positive outcome of that election does not start till almost June, is that what I read? July 1st?
Right.
So the hotel, the innkeepers don't have to charge and collect the extra 2% till July, starting July 1st. It was estimated that the additional revenue from that tax would be in the range of two-hundred thousand to two-hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year. We were grappling with the potential of increasing or steady-state deficits with our, oh, you took it away, the general fund budget, not the enterprise-owned budgets, but the general fund budget. And we were under a certain degree of certainty that that increase in hotel tax would alleviate the problem. The cost of running the election was in the twenty-five thousand dollar range, I believe. So the return on that investment in one year is quite substantial, and over the long haul, it's obvious that it was a good investment, I think. Spending twenty-five thousand dollars to repair a road is, is just, what could you get for twenty-five thousand dollars, Ken? Maybe if you, just a set of potholes, probably, right?
Maybe some chip seal?
Not even that much chip seal. Anyhow, it's not, it's not very much money with respect to road repairs.
Of course.
Roz, to your point, we normally try and do anything that relates to the city on existing elections, where we still have to pay five to ten thousand dollars, but we don't have to pay twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars. But in this case, if we waited a year, we'd have lost two-hundred and forty thousand dollars, roughly, minus the net fifteen, to spend the net fifteen, we get two-hundred and forty thousand dollars for it. It's, it makes...
It was a timing issue, in other words.
Yeah, it was just a timing issue. Normally, we wait, in this case, the numbers were big, and our deficits are large, and it seemed like the right thing to do.
And to reiterate, all this was done in open forum here, and frankly, the attendance, whether it was online or here during all those debates, was pretty, pretty small.
Any other council comments? All right, we'll move to agenda item number six, committee updates. Todd, anything to report from our subcommittees?
Yes, Downtown Enhancement Advisory Committee, we met last week. A lot of the discussions are around preparations for the Winter Magic event, and the other is around how we get a two-thousand-pound slab in place without breaking it for the Flower of Life statue. And so, and I know that the chamber is looking for some volunteers. We're also holding a special DAC meeting again this Friday to continue discussions.
Thank you very much. Agenda item number seven, Consent Agenda. The city manager recommends approval of the following consent agenda items. All resolutions and ordinances on this agenda or added heretofore shall be introduced or adopted as applicable by title only, and the full reading thereof is hereby waived. A, Approval of Minutes, October 9, 2023, regular meeting. B, Approval of Disbursements, Accounts Payable, 10-10, 10-11, 10-20, 11-2, and 11-6, 2023. Total Gross Payroll and Taxes for Periods Ending 10-1, 10-15, and 1-29, that must be 10-29-23. C, Monthly Investment and Financial Report for the Period Ending October 31, 23. And D, Police Department Monthly Report, October 23.
Any concerns? No? Okay, move to, move to approve consent agenda items A through D.
Second.
By title only.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Passes five-zero. Moving on to agenda item number eight, Discussion Possible Action. Modification to Snow Removal Operations on South Mount Shasta Boulevard. Report by Mr. Kellogg.
Okay, is this working?
No.
Okay.
They'll get it going. Try again.
Keep talking.
Can you hear me?
There you go. Yep.
Get close.
You know, and if I can give a preamble to this, there were a number of council meetings ago where we were asked by South Mount Shasta business owners if there was a way that we could remove snow, you know, by plowing it to the middle of the street and then removing it like we do North Mount Shasta. And so we were asked to explore by council different ways that we might be able to do that, regardless of cost, and so that is what Ken is going to review for us.
So basically, I'm going to read through the report that's in your packet, but then add some additional facts to it as well. So currently, during snowfall events, Public Works plows snow to the center of the street on Mount Shasta Boulevard from Alma South to Forest Street. Does the same on Chestnut from Ivy South to Mount Shasta Boulevard. After being plowed to the center of the street, the snow is moved a second time and is loaded into dump trucks and taken to the old mill site and deposited. The process of plowing to the center of the street is directed in the municipal code, and you'll see it there quoted. This is a downtown district that has been established through municipal code for this type of treatment. Basically, it's a direct benefit to all businesses and properties within the mandatory removal district. The process of handling the snow twice adds significantly to the cost of clearing the snow from our streets. This last snow season, the city spent forty-six thousand five hundred and seventy-three dollars on contractors hauling snow to the old mill site, another four hundred, or forty-eight thousand five hundred and twenty-nine was expended through Forest Account, preparing the site for the snow to be deposited and loading the contractors' trucks as well as running one of our own. This totals to ninety-five thousand one hundred and two dollars. This is for plowing to the center of the road and hauling it off. For reference, the total winter snow plowing operations for the city was three hundred thousand eight hundred and four dollars. Council has asked staff to explore the idea of extending the length of the section of Mount Shasta Boulevard where snow gets plowed to the center and then removed. Initially, the request was starting from Forest Avenue or Forest Street all the way down to Roloff's Court. So myself, Police Chief Robert Gibson, Public Works Supervisor David Torres, we went out and did a site assessment of the proposed section of Mount Shasta Boulevard to be studied.
and did a site assessment of the proposed section of Mount Shasta Boulevard to be studied. What we found, in a nutshell, is the section from Forest down to Old McLeod was really too narrow to work the same way downtown does. The street is 47 feet wide instead of 57, as you'll find downtown. The sidewalks are much narrower than you'll find downtown. That section of street, just because of the narrowness, there's not enough room to pile the snow in a center berm and do it effectively and do it safely. However, from Old McLeod down to Roloff's Court is a much wider section. It's 54 feet wide, very similar to downtown. The sidewalks are also wider. So that section of street could accommodate plowing to the center and having the sidewalks plowed as well. Going on from there. So, now I better start quoting here again, or I'm going to miss something. "It was determined that the center berm of snow should not extend north beyond Seven Suns due to site distance and street width. From there, it would extend south to the southern end of Native Grounds property." This is approximately 900 lineal feet. "A gap would be provided at Holly Street intersection. Snow that has been plowed to the center of the road reduces site distance for drivers and pedestrians, prevents left-hand turns accepted intersections, and promotes icy pavement with repeated freeze cycles from the berm. It needs to be removed as soon as practicable. Adding the proposed section of South Mount Shasta Boulevard to the city's cruise workload would increase that removal time by days. The solution to this is to use contractors for the additional portion of South Mount Shasta Boulevard to having center plowed snow. It would also simplify the tracking of the additional expenses. Using last winter as an example, a preliminary estimate using contractors to clear snow from the center of the road and plow the sidewalks for the full winter season would be approximately $36,000." Yeah. The city is reimbursed by the state for about 50% of its snow removal costs. So the additional cost burden would be $18,000 to the city. For the new section of proposed plowing, there is 1,800 lineal feet of frontage giving both sides of the street, 900 times two. The cost of lineal, and this is one way I started by looking at this, the cost per lineal foot of property fronting the street would be $10 per lineal foot per year. As an example, if your property had a frontage of 100 feet on South Mount Shasta Boulevard, the additional yearly snow removal cost would be $1,000. The cost, this cost projection is preliminary, would need to be examined on a regular basis and adjusted as necessary. Look at it on it, examine it on a yearly or bi-yearly basis. Now, I did a lot of talking with people at Mammoth Lakes and Truckee. They both use different methods, but Truckee specifically, let me back up a little bit. Truckee and Mammoth both use assessment districts to handle their additional snow plowing. They're very similar to us in that the residential areas, they just plow to the side of the street, clearing driveways, sidewalks, comes down to the property owners. They do have downtown areas similar to us, and they do plow similar to us. Like Truckee, for example, does plow to the center of the street, and they load it up, the berms up with loaders into dump trucks and haul it to a big disposal site for the winter. But they have an assessment district for that. It's more focused on their sidewalks than the roads. They get, and that, talking to their public works department, that is because historically the county handled the main drag through town. And Truckee was only incorporated in 1993. And when that happened, the county already had an assessment district in place. When that incorporation took place, the city of Truckee actually got a portion of that assessment from the county. So that's the additional funding they have. Mammoth does something very similar. They are actually a smaller town, but they have a much more progressive assessment district setup. Of course, they're growing more than we are, but anytime they have a new subdivision formed, that development doesn't get approved unless there's an assessment district put in place to handle the snow. As far as going back and fixing the situation with the existing infrastructure, the existing streets, this gets into an area that I'm not familiar with, that we'd have to talk to the city attorney. But they use, what is the term? Community benefit districts. The difference between that and an assessment district? I don't know. Tim, you might know, but there's some legality there that you can't go back and impose a new assessment on existing. I'm over my head here. Anyway, bottom line is they both use assessment districts in one shape or form or another. So like I said, I was coming up, oh, Truckee has snow storage easements in a lot of parts of town. In other words, they can go through and fill your front yard with snow. It's just an easement you have on your property along their main streets. Not that we're going to go and impose something like that. This is just, I'm giving you an example of what some other towns do. So bottom line, if we wanted to do something like this on South Mount Shasta Boulevard, it's going to cost more money. One thing I came up with was the $10 per lineal foot of commercial frontage. You could look, do it that way. You could do it per square foot of commercial businesses. I'm sure we could look at other ways of doing it, too. Truckee specifically has a sidewalk clearing maintenance where I think it's a dollar 30 per square foot of commercial space that falls. I think they take the entire district, and then they take the entire square footage, and they break it up per owner, and each owner gets billed as per his square footage for that entire district. So I've rambled on here a bit. As far as recommendation for the council, it's really, what kind of direction do you want to go in?
Ken, one thing, can you add, you know, some communities will use a snowplow, you know, street-side or street-sized and blow that snow directly into a truck? And you've got some quotes on the, on that equipment.
Yes, you did. And you're right, there's some miscellaneous facts I didn't get to here. Both Truckee and Mammoth will use loader-mounted snow blowers, the very large ones. Now, they don't, neither one of them will use that snow blower to directly clear the street and by blowing it into a truck. It doesn't work. You just get a bunch of fluff blowing around the streets. To make something like that work, you have to berm it up first, like what we do downtown. You build a big berm, you let that snow consolidate. Then some cities, and sometimes they do this and sometimes they don't, depending on where exactly in town or the consistency of the snow or how many trucks they have available, they can use that blower to directly load the trucks from the berms or directly, yeah, directly load the trucks from the berms and then haul it to the disposal site. Sometimes they'll use that blower, again, to blow into that snow storage easement I was talking about. It's always a post-process. They always clear the streets with a plow. Once they've done that, sometimes they can use those big snow blowers to fill the trucks or blow it off, further off the street. A loader and snow blower attachment like that would run about $412,000. It's worth noting, both Truckee and Mammoth Lake use a combination of city, Forest Account, and contractors. Neither one tries to depend totally on their own crews, it's just not enough manpower. They both use contractors. That's pretty much anything else I had to add.
Thank you. We'll open up to questions from council, and I wanted to ask that in summary, it is possible to plow to the middle on the South Mount Shasta Boulevard except for that 900 square linear feet? Is that what I'm understanding? Or is it all of it is possible, it's just going to cost more money?
No, I'm sorry, I should have clarified that. Really, the only safe stretch I would recommend it being tried would be the southern part from Seven Suns down to Native Grounds, Roloff's Court.
Down to where?
Roloff's.
Roloff's Court. North of that, from, north from Old McLeod up to Forest is really too narrow to safely handle plowing to the center of the road.
Okay. So during discussion, we can come up with alternatives, but any other questions for now?
So Ken, how would you recommend handling the snow removal for that section where the street is only 47 feet wide?
Continue doing it the way we are doing it now.
Would it be possible to cut in for those commercial properties?
It would be difficult.
But possible?
Please.
So we have two issues. Last section of Old McLeod, north to Sisson. One, you've got an S corner going through there. You've got an uphill from ream. If you put a center berm, nobody's going to see northbound traffic. So you've got the same problem coming southbound at McLeod. It's so narrow there that a center berm, you're going to have no line of sight. We're going to end up having a lot of traffic collisions in that location between there, especially with the ream intersection. So from a safety standpoint and a traffic standpoint, if we put it in the center, we're literally going to be blocking people's line of sights. Then they're trying to start on a hill coming off a ream and for coming northbound, or if you're trying to come across Old McLeod and cross the Boulevard, you would not see the people coming around the corner with that berm. So from a safety issue from Old McLeod north to Forest, putting it in the center would create a severe hazardous condition for traffic.
Yeah, that part makes sense. Do you think it's possible to cut in for the commercial properties during that stretch of road?
I'm not sure what cut in to commercial, I don't know.
Cut in so that the, the snow doesn't go into their driveways?
That I don't know. When you say cut into, you're talking about...
This is my very technical term.
Talking about basically clearing the driveway, is what you're asking?
Avoiding the excess snow to block the business driveways.
It would take additional time and equipment.
Yeah. But possible.
If we're willing to hire more, again, the simplest way to do it is contract it. So if we're willing to pay more and get a contractor and to do driveways, yes.
Ken, you mentioned the snow blower truck combo to remove snow from the center of the road. South Lake Tahoe does that very effectively, but again, they plow into the center of the road first, and then they have the snow blower and truck right alongside each other going down the street.
And if you want to see, I spent way too much time researching this, but if you want to see a great video, Google Montreal and watch the snow removal they do. It's all at night, but it's like constant. They do, they've got these long, they don't use standard dump trucks. They've got these, I don't know what you call these, really long end dumps with the snow blowers running next to them. But it's like, if you look at the amount, the time and money, the number of passes, all the equipment they've got going down their streets, I mean, we couldn't come anywhere close to that.
In terms of the businesses or the area where they would like to have snowplow service on South Mount Shasta Boulevard, it seems to me that it would have to be in the form of an assessment district so that everybody is participating in the financial cost rather than, well, I'm not going to do that, my neighbor can pay.
Yeah, my understanding is the term is community facilities district. And you're right, it's 50% plus one.
That's a, that's a form of an assessment district.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Ken, currently, we have a $300,000 annual snow removal budget in our general fund? In this bucket?
No. Wrong bucket.
Wrong bucket, okay. We're a 3,300-person town. No, I'm getting into commentary, but that's, well, I'll save that.
All right, we will open up to public comment. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this agenda item, please come on up.
Thanks for the healthy discussion. Brian Ellis, resident in Mount Shasta since 2017. Just throwing this out there, I think it's probably obvious, but maybe an elephant in the room about the area we're talking about being the number one tourist destination area where people are walking around all the time, 365 days a year now, right? So pedestrian safety, sidewalks not being plowed or shoveled to date last, so we live south of town or south in town. And walking up and down Mount Shasta Boulevard from November through March this year was terrible. So if we have more, if we have more winters like that, this is an impact on tourism, tourism safety, all that, right? So it's not just the $18,000 of additional cost, it's the overall vision and, you know, the way we appear to the, to the rest of the world. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak?
Well, it's really Rosal McCoy, Mount Shasta. It's really nice that you want to clear some driveways, but where's going to be the limit? You're going to just do it for some businesses, some people, but other people don't get their driveways opened? And it's like, well, if you start, if the city starts paying for some people, then you're going to have to justify to everyone else why I get a six-foot-high berm on Lake Street because my street's so wide and it gets pushed up into my yard and I get six foot of ice. So you got to consider that when you start offering to clear somebody's driveway.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak?
Glenn Kaufman, Mount Shasta City resident. Some comments on the comments tonight here. First of all, my wife and I, we walk all over the southwest face of Mount Shasta, and we're constantly coming across illegal fire rings and things like that. And it's usually where people are driving up the Forest Service roads and then pulling off and camping. So there needs to be some signage on the Forest Service roads, just not at the beginning of the trails and so on. But where people want to hide, they want to go up and start a fire somewhere where the ranger can't see them. And in 30 years of me...
Sorry, can you have it pertaining to the agenda items? So the snow removal is the subject at hand?
Oh, I thought, I was out of the room. She said it was anything.
No, just snow removal.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Well, I live right at Sisson, South Mount Shasta Boulevard, and that's where you guys stop going to the center of the road from there south. It's not Forest. You had it right.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this agenda item? No one online? All right, we'll bring it back to council for discussion and direction. All right, we'll bring it back to council for discussion and direction.
I think the proposal is to talk to the residents and businesses on South Mount Shasta Boulevard. And I would certainly be supportive of that to see, to get a sense of where they are and what the pulse is and the viability of perhaps doing the community services district, the assessment district.
Would you have a preference if it was proposed to them on a lineal footage basis or a square footage of their establishment basis?
I think you'd get a good sense as a result of talking with them.
Okay.
And just from my point of view, I think we know that this is going to be an extra cost to the city in order to make this happen. I think we've been, however you want to look at it, lucky, unlucky, but we haven't had that big of a storm season in many, many years. So in order for us to be a tourist destination, we need to fix this so that our tourism can walk around safely and, and still come support us when it's snowing.
It does fall into two different buckets of action. One is clearing the street. The other one is clearing the sidewalks. So it's really two discussions, I think, rather than just one.
I would agree, yes.
Pardon me for this perspective, but we're kind of chunking up the town into different groups about, for instance, our downtown district gets a $300,000 budget currently, or in part is, is their plowing is, comes out of the $300,000 budget. And they get the services, they get, they get plowed to the center and then cleared, primarily subcontracted. They don't pay any additional fun, any, any additional monies for that. Whereas businesses at the south end of town are, at least potentially, I don't know where we're going with this all yet, going to be potential, have an assessment district of some form where monies, they'd be asked for monies to get the same service that businesses in further north get. Not for free, but it's already inside the general, but general fund, budget line for snow removal. It just seems to me that, and for a lot of the folks in the audience, we're a, we're a 3,300-person town. Tahoe is huge, trucky, 17,000. We're, we cannot compete. We cannot provide the services that those much larger towns provide without writing really large checks that I suspect the general perspective, we, we don't have the money to write those checks. So if we're going to expand the area that does center plowing and then clearing, my suggestion is we figure out, plus potentially having a section that's side-plowed but then cleared for commercial properties. The good news is, last year, and the numbers you presented us with great detail, which was nice, is, thank God, we don't have those winters every winter, and it appears we are heading in towards a longer-term tendency towards milder, less, less like last year. And while you can't count on that, because of course, nobody knows, but these are general fund, funds that are paying for the snow removal budget. And it just seems how, whatever we decide, we don't think about it as downtown business district and some special assessment district. We think about it as the businesses. And how do we take care of the businesses in this town? And then if there's any money left over, how do we figure out how to clear some sidewalks or, or some main route sidewalks, which I have no idea how much that would cost, but I'm suspecting it's a relatively large number as well. And I, I'm just hesitant to move forward with any kind of special assessment to, to some businesses and not others.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree also. I think there's no, there's no special fund, right, Muriel, for snow plowing? No special set-asides, no, we don't have anything like that at all. It's just general fund, general fund monies that cover the snow plowing.
It is, but it, it needs to be said that the downtown businesses pay for snow removal of their, on their sidewalks of $12 per year. That's a part of their business license, which is, which I have been saying for quite some time, and I've said it over and over and over again, that that does not cover the cost of removing the snow from the sidewalks. So I would suggest that not only are, if we're looking at plowing snow into the middle of the road in the, in the new area that you're talking about, as well as snow removal in the downtown district so that people can park and use sidewalks, because that's the reason that you put it in the middle is so that we have parking and sidewalk use, correct? So I think that that's what we're talking about. Parking and sidewalk use in the areas that need parking and sidewalk use. That it also be determined as an increase in cost to the, to the downtown district in comparison to the new area to make it a, an equitable and fair charge based on whether it be lineal foot, whether it be square footage, whatever that is, that that would be an assessment for not just downtown and not, and something different for the other place, but it's, it, the analysis uses the same sort of mathematics to figure out what that fair and equitable cost would be for that service.
Right, so I think as far as giving direction, I think it would be best that there's a unified commercial district, snow plowing program that's funded separately. And that would go from all the way up here through to Roloff's Court, I think. There's still some businesses south of that, actually. That's, so to be determined, but to have better quality plowing, which includes snow to the center and then pickup, but also quicker, better pickup along the, the parking areas where you can't do center plowing. And then this latest thing, which I haven't heard of, cutout? So if that's possible.
It's a thing.
And, you know, there's, yeah, so how far do we want to take this? But to be equitable across the whole commercial sphere in our town, I think it should be a unified approach versus saying that this two-block area can, can decide if they want to be taxed, basically. I have a feeling that they'll probably not go for it when they see this, the price, especially one group, it's, I just did the math on that. It's going to be pretty expensive. So by spreading out the costs over more commercial properties, it might be palatable. And therefore, we'll have the offset versus what we're spending now and in, in the future, if we increase service. I, I think that's just a better approach than this very singular approach.
We got a separate problem here, right? The mayor's just finished up the general fund.
Whether it can be done with one assessment district or two assessment districts may be a question of legalities. The downtown business district was formed in the 1950s as an assessment district. And that required a vote in order to create it. There has been talk for at least a few years with the act about whether that could be expanded, which would require an additional vote to expand. I don't know how the way-too-low sidewalk clearing fee came about or when. It's, it's obviously been a very long time. It needs to be raised for the downtown area. But there would be a question of the legality of creating one assessment district versus two. But either way, having a assessment district or two assessment districts where everybody who benefits from the snow plowing pays a fair share, an equitable share, makes sense. And that, I think it starts with finding out what South Mount Shasta Boulevard property owners have to say, and then also looking at what adjustments might be made to the existing district fees.
I think maybe a good solution for direction for right now is to have Ken, Muriel, and Todd get together and see, does it make sense to have a district? How do we unify this for our downtown? Maybe check with John Kenny, make sure we're on the up and up as far as distributing these funds to the downtown and district and outside? Or do we need to unify that or blah, blah, blah?
So I spoke to John Kenny. And so we need to right-size the cost of, as we talked about, of removing snow from sidewalks where it's ridiculously low right now. He suggested treating it as a second district, so we're not opening the other contract other than for the increase for covering the manpower and depreciation on equipment for the downtown area and make sure it's consistent on the south side. What John Kenny says is that we need a majority vote from those businesses on South Mount Shasta. And we can form that district and we can model that contract after the one that's in place for the current district minus the updated fees.
Well, there you go. I think that sounds pretty directional.
All right. If we're all good, we can move on. Are we all good? Okay. We, does anyone need a break? No break? Okay. All right, agenda item number nine, first reading of CCO-23 dash.
A number to the second reading and adoption.
Thank you. To be determined, amendment to Mount Shasta Municipal Code, Chapter 7.20, Parks and Recs Areas. Mr. Gibson.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. At the October 9th, 2023 City Council meeting, council approved a memorandum of understanding between the city and the Mount Shasta Parks and Recreation District. This MOU enables the city police department to enforce city municipal codes on district property now. The proposed changes to the code amendments will bring Section 7.20 into alignment with what the current Park and Recreation District Code is, such things as the changing of the time to sunrise to sunset and adding such prohibitions to our books, such as no more nudity in the park, there are drug-free zones, and enhanced fire safety regulations.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
I had questions about, I see, no bats or baseball in parks, that sort of thing. I was thinking, can't have kids with the little plastic bats in the, the wiffle balls?
That was in, I don't remember reading. That's not one of the changes there.
I read that, I thought, what? No, and there was also a blank on page 93, I think it was, of the agenda packet. And I wondered what staff wanted to put in on that, to fill in that blank of, on page 93. But there may have been, maybe that's a different, that's a different agenda item.
That's a remnant from the discussion about snow plowing. That's a remnant from the discussion about snow plowing. My page is just, it looks like it was cut and pasted from, you know, it's just gobbledygook from another city. That's a technical term, by the way.
Cutting it in. Any other questions? All right, we'll open up to public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this agenda item, please come on up. Anyone online? All right, we will close public comment back to council for discussion and motion.
We don't have to worry about the baseball. I found what Tim was talking about.
Page 60, agenda page 67, paragraph I.
So this is regarding this park here, right? So, Tim, before I make a motion, apparently, at this park, playing regular batted-ball-type sports is discouraged. Baseball, batted-ball-type sports is discouraged. Yeah, they don't want that here, so is that acceptable?
Anybody's going to arrest your kids if they're playing wiffle ball? But if you're hitting a line drive through the Parks District window?
I think it's for safety.
Yeah, it's.
It's for safety for the playground proximity, is my understanding.
I just assume this is pertaining to this park only, so it's, I think it's an established practice. I really don't remember seeing people playing baseball out there very much, frankly. Yeah. So you okay with that? We don't have Sean Shaw here to, to go over the details of that one, but I think there's a reason for it. All right, so I'll move to approve the first reading of CCO-23 dash, to be determined, amendments to the Mount Shasta Municipal Code, Chapter 7.20, Parks and Recreation Areas. By title only, move it to the second reading and adoption.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes 5-0. And agenda item number 10, approval of resolution CCR-23 dash. 30. Approving the application for the CAL FIRE California Climate Investments Wildfire Prevention Grant. Mr. Burns.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. In early 2023, the Fire Department partnered with the McConnell Foundation to write a grant for fuel removal projects on the city property. The grant included the purchase of a track loader with a masticator attachment for ongoing maintenance of the property. After the period performed of the grant has expired, in October, the city was notified that we had received the grant of $681,393. This includes the purchase of the track loader, as well as the attachments, as well as other equipment like chainsaws, personal protective equipment, and three part-time personnel dedicated to just the fuel removal process of the fuel mitigation on the 150 acres that has been designated in this grant. So if we accept this, it's pretty much just, we get all the equipment as well as we'll be able to maintain the fuel reduction projects that we've been trying to establish throughout the city.
And to remind council, in previous years, we've had to go out for bids for use of a skid steer, masticator had, for a contractor to remove, you know, fuel essentially from pretty small areas. And this, you know, we have the tools on hand. We'll have, you know, dedicated chainsaws that are part of this grant, personal protective gear, and the, you know, extra manpower to carry this out at staff rates. So, I mean, it's also free, so there's that.
That's appealing. Any questions? Any questions?
There's some, there's a couple of maps down the end of this. One of them refers to the city of Mount Shasta and surrounding area and the right-of-way clearing.
So the right-of-ways would be, we're gonna look at main arteries for evacuation routes to make sure they're opened up in the event we have to evacuate, as well as going into other city infrastructure, including the water tanks and other areas that could be drastically influenced by fire in the event we did have a catastrophic fire start off the freeway or off of 89 and push through the city.
There's a, at Shastis Park where Rockefeller runs along there, they've come in and cut before. Is that an example of the kind of...
That's an example. We're gonna be doing anywhere from mastication work to hand-cutting, piling, burning, just depends on the terrain, where, what is feasible for that area. Having the piece of machinery, again, after the grant is done and set for, or we're gonna actually have it for maintain, to maintain these areas and keep up on them, so maybe they don't continually grow.
Yeah, maintenance is...
It's gonna be huge just to have the piece of machinery to keep going.
Indeed.
After we're done with the initial 150 acres, then every year, we can pick a section, go back through and do it really quick in turn.
Thank you.
In looking at the arteries of evacuation, is McLeod Avenue going to be coming before us again? I think we tabled that a number of months ago, and we need to look at that again.
So, yeah, you know, Ken, can you check? I know that we bundled the McLeod Avenue parking issue that Pace was looking at with, you know, the geometric issues that, you know, we went around and around with the surveyor and what the actual right-of-way is up there. Can you get with Pace and see if they can finally provide the study of how we provide as much parking up there as we can while still allowing safe passage?
Yes.
Thank you.
Clarification, so Chief, we have been awarded this nearly $700,000, and this is an application to accept.
Yeah.
It's a resolution to accept.
So you have to accept the resolution, and I'll send that into the CAL FIRE grant process.
The money is coming, and we have to go through this formal...
You just print out chapter improvement.
Formalities, yeah. All right, we'll open up to public comment. Anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item, please come on up. Yes, sir.
I'm assuming when you're done, you get to keep the gear? What's the plan for budget for maintaining?
Can you come up to the mic?
What's the plan and the budget for maintaining the gear? This gear, if you look at any of the tree surfaces, has to be repaired and maintained. There's hydraulic oil and all kinds of other bits and pieces that need to be done, so there'll be a line item that's required to maintain this gear going forward if you're gonna keep it. Are you gonna keep it?
Yeah.
So you'll need to think of a plan to...
So, my plan is, once we get it all, I'm gonna have the company give us a rough estimation of what the yearly costs can be, and then I'll have to get with Muriel and the city manager and decide the best route, and as well as there'll be the warranties for X amount of years anyways to start.
Obviously, but don't you want to know that expense before you accept the gear, so you know how much money you're gonna have to pay, considering you're having deficits already? Just thinking about that.
Anyone else in the audience wish to speak? Anyone online? Okay, we'll bring it back to council for discussion and motion.
Well, following on that, wouldn't part of the funds be available for maintenance? Or just strictly capital improvement grant?
So I came into this in the middle of this, so I'm learning as much as I can from what was initially written. The way I understand it, I mean, there's gonna be, for the initial part, I believe there is maintenance cost in there with the grant. In the near future, like I said, it's gonna be, I've talked to other contractors, and they say, yes, there's the maintenance, but if we take care of it, the way that I've been instructed by all the contractors around, show vastus for years. I mean, there's always gonna be the possibility, you know, of replacing heads, as in the teeth or the masticator head, or something like that, but that's just part of doing business.
All right, so without further comment, I'm going to move to approve resolution CCR-23-dash.
Thirty.
Thirty. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Mount Shasta approving the application for the California Climate Investments Wildfire Prevention Grants Program.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 5-0. All right, agenda item 11, adoption of Raftelli's Final Drainage Impact Fee Report. Todd.
Okay, so two years ago, just under two years ago, we contracted with Raftelli's, a national expert in doing drainage impact fees, and what they did is looked at our failing drainage infrastructure and came up with a hard dollar amount. And essentially, what the methodology they used is they hired a company with proprietary software with very high-resolution images to look at the amount of impervious surface that we have in the city. And based on that amount of impervious surface, applied a unit to that that would, you know, in total, would allow us to pay, again, for this failing infrastructure. And so in their table, their proposed increase, you know, gradually ramps up from right now a very low and inconsequential $1 a month that is not cutting it in terms of fixing a lot of crumbling and failing infrastructure. And we're in pretty desperate shape right now. But basically, since nobody's picked this ball up in a long time to take care of this drainage infrastructure, we're paying, we're playing catch-up if this is adopted. So if it's adopted as Raftelli proposes, when it goes to the ballot, it starts out with an increase of all the way up from a buck a month to $20 a month. And we would catch up, you know, to a value, I think it's $28 after the fifth year per month. And that is what we need to ensure that we're able to fix what's failing or not working.
Thank you.
So it's a five-year, it's a five-year financial plan, but the discussion was doing two, one, two, three, possibly four drainage projects, and so to finance those, I would assume the loans would be 20 to 25 years. And so the, the fee structure would have to remain in place. So it's actually, this is just a five-year, it's an initial plan.
Correct.
Okay, so then we'd have to do another study after this, or can we just assume that you would do a continuation vote?
We would, if it, if this is what the voters want, that the $28 per month, that would be what is adopted until we get to the point that we understand that it's no longer, we don't have a reserve for fixing these kind of projects, and we have new projects that are above and beyond the capabilities of this fee for paying for it, and then we'd have to look at another...
So it'd be frozen at $28, it'd be frozen at $28 going forward if that's sufficient funds for the financing parts with respect to major capital improvements?
That's correct.
And the operations of...
And a very slight reserve.
Any other questions?
Todd, the drainage fund right now is a dollar a month.
Yes.
Has been for more than two, two-and-a-half decades, maybe three decades. Explain, if you would, why a dollar a month isn't sufficient and what that insufficiency has caused the city?
Well, you know, depending on the drainage project, just like road projects, they're extremely expensive, they can run into the millions of dollars. A small project is about $500,000. They're, they're, they're just extremely expensive, and they'll continue to get more expensive over time, but the alternative is, is, you know, failing infrastructure and damage to property and, you know, basically, getting to your original point of this being 20-plus years, the reason this increase appears so steep, which it is a steep increase, is the fact that nobody's picked this up for 20 years, and we've lived with the dollar a month, and we haven't, nothing's been done up to this point to gradually raise this, so it's, it's an easier pill to swallow.
And how will the increase in drainage fees solve the problems?
Essentially, it's gonna allow us to, you know, basically to reconstruct infrastructure that's already failing, and we will pick and choose from the projects that are in the worst shape and then work backwards from there. And that's part of what I'm hoping for, and Ken and I have talked about, is coming up with a capital improvement plan for the city where we have a list of projects that we can then pull off the shelf based on the perceived need and then work from there. But we've got, we have a lot of benign neglect that we need to account for, and if we don't fix it, it's gonna impact all of us.
And if the citizens approve the increase in assessment from a dollar to something that's more reasonable, certainly that's not any one-year's receipt or two-years' receipts is not gonna be sufficient to pay for the repairs to the infrastructure. Can you explain how this revenue stream goes to pay for repairs?
If I'm understanding the question, I mean, the gist is, we need to pull in enough money over a period, a shorter period of time, so we're able to accumulate enough funds that we're actually able to make a dent in the projects that we have if we wait and piecemeal it over time. It's, that's just, it's a recipe for disaster, and while we're waiting to fix the major infrastructure problems, other infrastructure is then starting to fail.
Well, actually, what I thought I was asking you is to explain to the folks who are here and listening online, the process of going out to get a bond to cover the cost of infrastructure repairs and improvements, and then using the monthly assessments to make the bond payments.
Right. So we need to pull in enough drainage impact fees that, and we have to have a, a quantity that is enough for the city to, you know, for a bond agency to float a bond and show that we're good for it over time.
Good. All right, we will open up to public comment. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak, come on up.
Thank you. My name is Phil Dietrich. I live near the intersection of McLeod Avenue and Washington Avenue. This morning, I saw the flare-up on Nextdoor that was mentioned a while ago. It's about a drainage report. I'm really interested in that because my property and several of my neighbors are occasionally flooded from the inadequacy of city infrastructure, decades-old, poor planning, and occasional lapses in management, in my view. But I went to the website, didn't see much there, went downtown, staff was kind enough to immediately email me the agenda with a copy of the report attached. Went through that, decided to come down here tonight, and I've already learned quite a bit about, quite a bit more, I will say, that answer some of my questions, especially Mr. Juas's comments earlier. This is a March ballot, there's a public comment, this is purely informational, there will be a public comment period. That all sounds good. Applaud you for that, but I think that it's, going back then to look at the, what I called the flare-up on Nextdoor, the lack of information has left a vacuum for the really unfortunate misinformation that has been online recently, including some kind of personal stuff. So I'd encourage you to really fill that stuff in as soon as you can, because unless you do, the, your public information process is going to be, in my opinion, subject to all that over and over. Let's, let's get this down to what it's really about, which is not about the projects in my neighborhood, it's about how the city is gonna take on this problem as a whole. That said, I think for me, something that's important and remains unclear is, to what extent is there an opportunity to modify this proposal before it goes to the ballot? I personally think that the so-called equivalent residential unit is inequitable and should be revisited. I don't know if that opportunity exists. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, come on up.
Simon Drummond. Your ERU comments, I've lived in other cities, lived in Denver. Denver does a per-square-foot area to calculate fees. This seems like a flat fee. What have you done to look at businesses and larger areas that are gonna contribute towards this? I own a very small parcel in Mount Shasta. There are also much larger parcels, and each of us paying the same amount seems very inequitable. There's obviously city surfaces that have to be accounted for, and that, I understand the distribution of that, but coming up with some form of new real estate transactions when properties are sold, there are other ways than just simply a flat fee across the board. That seems like, and we haven't seen a proposal, and that sort of refers to my bit about the website not containing some of the information earlier, sorry about that, but what have we done? And hopefully, we will all get to see this, to understand it, and to speak to the gentleman's question, what opportunities will there be to change this flat-rate fee across the board to, for everybody, once it comes out? Thank you.
Glenn Kaufman, again. Whereas I agree that we have to raise the rates for the stormwater, all right? I think there's a flaw in the proposal, because from what I'm hearing tonight, I've not read the proposal, but what I'm hearing tonight is, they took the impermeable surfaces, and that was it. Rooftops, sidewalks, whatever, but why does California not allow rainwater collection? All right? If we were to use mitigation principles and use rainwater collection and permaculture, permeability factors on people's lawns, give them low-interest loans to be able to put in catch basins, or what are they called, swales, or whatever it is, but I don't think any of that is in the proposal, and it should be. But I don't think any of that is in the proposal, and it should be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rosal McCloy. When I purchased my home, I know that there was a certain amount of money that was paid for this service. So it's just not the dollar a month, but when I purchased my home, there was a chunk of money that was contributed towards this service. So I think just focusing on the dollar a month is skewed on, well, how much money was really collected per household. And I agree that it needs to be not a flat-rate fee, but more dependent upon how much land do we have. Because I have a lot more land that will collect water than I do house. I have a small house and more land, which is wetlands. And ultimately, we need to look at, can our retired citizens that are on fixed incomes afford this ever, I mean, because what, I've gone from $30 to $100 and some odd dollars. And where do we make it so our citizens cannot live here any longer and that they lose their homes and they're pushed into, like, retirement rooms? And that we need to look at some kind of lifeline for these kinds of charges from the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in the audience? Anyone online? Our first online speaker will be Betty Krieger. Hello, Betty. Begin when ready. We cannot hear you, so make sure you're unmuted. We'll need to start her clock over. Betty, we still can't hear you. She's not unmuted? Be sure to speak into the mic.
Okay, I put my--
Oh, there you are.
Yeah, I was having trouble with my computer speaker, apparently. Yeah, I would like to agree with those who brought up the point that a flat rate is inequitable. But the reason that I wanted to speak is that Todd mentioned about different projects and some being more important than others, and that there's a lot of deteriorating conditions in the city. And it would, I think it would be really helpful to people if that could be more expounded on and explained to us so that we would be able to more understand really what's going on with those areas that need attention. And that was really all I had to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Johanna. Hello, Johanna. Oh, we still have Betty on there.
Hi there.
Oh, go ahead.
Hi, good evening. Yeah, so I wrote a little note to everyone because I, there was a lot of information there, and it just seems like it is a large increase, and it does seem like it might be inequitable to several people. And I did not see a list of, like, specific projects like this would go to. And from what I understand, like, developers are getting, you know, 75% breaks in their fees. And it just seemed to me, and I'm not, you know, correct me here because I'm not, I'm not familiar with all of this, but it seems to me if developers are getting a break, why is it being pushed on to the smaller property owners and people on such a basis? It just seems to me that, you know, large developments like the Danko, I think there was a comment earlier tonight where people were, where someone commented that, you know, I wouldn't let some, I wouldn't let a development be built without, you know, them being assessed a fee. I think maybe that was for the snow removal, but that could similarly apply for drainage and sewer and all of that. So it's just something to think about. Like, you know, the big guys have the deep pockets and I think, you know, and they're taking up a lot of space. And, well, some of them, anyway. And so it would just, I guess, be nice to know how that works and where the money would actually be going. Thank you.
Thank you, Johanna. All right, we will close public comment. Back to council for discussion.
Do you want to comment on any of the speakers for clarification? Todd, Jeffrey?
Yes, I would.
Why don't you go ahead?
Just to be clear, this is our stormwater drainage system. This is not the water system. It's not the wastewater system.
And let me cut in real quick. It exists. This is something that exists now, and it is deteriorating. That's the issue. Go ahead.
Sure, thanks. Hookup fees or initial fees when you buy your house, you pay water and wastewater. There's no drainage isn't in there. The stormwater system is culverts, pipes--
Catch basins.
Yeah.
Catch basins.
Ditches. It is literally the stormwater removal wherever, wherever happens to fall. It's not like the water system where we've got a by-usage scenario where we've got meters. This is just stormwater drainage, which is why it's flat rate. And government at all levels has a proud history of kicking the can down the road and not taking care of their needs in a timely manner. We're no different. A dollar a household a month? It's laughable. And it's time to actually handle stuff, which we're real grateful to have good professionals and city managers to go do this. And it's time to deal with it. And unfortunately, because we haven't for decades, because $24,000 a year does next to nothing, you have to write, go get large amounts, large bonds, and then have a guaranteed revenue stream of fees--
To pay that bond.
--which was in this bucket-- to go pay them off. And that's what this is.
Yeah, and if I can add to that, there was a comment about developers coming in and paying for their share. You know, a developer coming into the city is required to meet certain standards, including putting in the infrastructure or making sure their infrastructure is in shape to be able to carry wastewater, water, and drainage from that site. So that's covered. That's, that's, that's just, that's a non-issue.
Right. So to carry on with that, to be more explicit with the concerns of some of the speakers, so we'll do by example. Say, by some miracle, a developer showed up and wanted to build out housing and/or commercial buildings on the landing, both sides, east and west, in the next 12 months. Part of that process would be to, and we're trying to come up with ingenious ways of helping finance the infrastructure, but part, but if that doesn't exist, they have to come up with the funds to build the infrastructure for that project, which includes the big three, water, sewer, and storm drainage. And that initial capital investment will be part of the project. This money, these fees, would not go to that. So just to make that clear, if actual developers, which we don't really have, the Danko projects on hold, but the Danko project will have to pay for the infrastructure improvements related to that project, which they seem to have gotten the grant to do. But again, those pipes involving those three different infrastructure issues would be part of that project and not included by this. The ongoing maintenance after it's installed and running, there'd be a charge to those metered people and those ratepayers there to maintain the existing storm drain system going forward. But this isn't a plan to give developers, whoever they are, and there's really none at this point except for Danko and their Affordable Housing Development Group. This isn't, this isn't an attempt to underwrite or subsidize developers. I don't know how we got there. That's not happening. So with that hopefully cleared up, it's, as Jeffrey was getting to very thoroughly, this is about maintaining and improving the current stormwater drainage system. Now, it started back in the Giuliana Lucchese term with, as a city planner, where she hired someone called Civic. We got a grant to hire Civic Spark Fellows to do, amongst other things, they basically found and charted all of our infrastructure with respect to water, sewer, and drainage systems. They also did studies on the quality of the soils, permeability, so going forward, that would be there for our use. And lastly, they came up with six projects with respect to stormwater drainage. And from what I recall, one of them had to do with Washington Street, another one had to do with McLeod Avenue. There is a broad category for Coal Creek, another broad category for Castle Creek, and there were two smaller ones. I think one of them was down at the Mill Pond, fixing up that situation down there. And I don't remember what the sixth one was. But I do think it would behoove us, Todd, to list the potential projects or the actual probable projects that roughly thinks need to be put at the forefront of this effort.
Can do. And Ken, we can talk about this. You know, we've talked about putting together a capital improvement program. I think we should probably start with drainage and, and look at, you know, our yawning chasm of need and rank ordered by the most, projects that are in most dire need of repair. And then, and then an associated cost estimate.
Yeah, I think that would be very helpful to, to the public to know what projects--
They're paying for.
--are our priority, how much they're going to cost, so they can get some sense of the sort of bonding that we would need to do, the sort of revenue that we need to have as revenue stream to be making the monthly bond payments or the periodic bond payments.
Yes, and I want to reiterate and be careful about this because this is a report and this is going to a vote. So, and as I mentioned, there is a long public comment period before we get to the ballot. And council wants, you know, staff provides information on the projects and relative cost, and that's revealed to our citizens, then based on this public comment, we need to determine if, if we move forward with this vote with the rate as it stands, at a different rate or some other iteration.
From my perspective, we have to raise the dollar a month. We don't, that's not a choice. The question might be whether it's to $20, $25, $28. What is the correct amount? And that's based upon the projected expenses that the city will incur over a period of years.
Correct.
The capital improvement projects. And you mentioned that this is too late for the March ballot, so you did not mention when this item would likely come before the voters.
So I have a call in to the election clerk. I was under the impression that there was a June ballot, and I think I'm wrong on that. I need to hear back from Laura Bynum. The county election clerk left her message today. She's really responsive, so I'm sure I'll hear from her tomorrow.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there is a June ballot.
I think I'm confusing that.
The June, in California, there's usually in a non-presidential year, non-presidential election year, there is a June, first Tuesday in June election roughly, you know, every other year, the off year. However, during a presidential election year, we've changed it to March. That's the election that we missed. So without having to go to a special election, as we just had, this would have to wait till November.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking also, is be November ballot. But there'd be plenty of time between now and then to get out information, to explain to everybody quite clearly why a change in the assessment is required and what fees would be reasonable.
We can do that.
Todd, would you mind discussing why, in this instance, it does need to go to ballot and what happens if it fails?
Well, it's complicated. There is a 218 process that requires when we're, there were a number of things, but assessment, assessment increases, we need to seek public opinion. It's part of California law. If it isn't passed, there are projects that are very close to failing right now. They will fail. They will fail.
Thank you. So to receive approval for this tonight will allow us to open up the public comment period necessary to move forward.
It doesn't. It's, this is just, you know, it's actually kind of unusual that I put it on. I just want to make sure that council read it and the public had an opportunity to read it, absorb it, understand the methodology just early. When it comes time for the election, you know, there typically is a four-month process, and three months of that is for public outreach. And so we'll be recirculating that study that has been done before that, and we'll be taking, you know, more comments. All right, so through the chair.
So to sum up, this is somewhat of an initial, this could be an initial statement by council saying that, yes, it is a good idea to have a fee increase for the stormwater drainage utility in order to improve our several drainage systems. Within here, folks, is one quote on the cost of improving the Coal Creek drainage system, which, which is a big problem. You can visually see it from rough, in the area of Mike and Tony's going across the street on a diagonal towards, I think it's John Zanni's driveway. You can see the subsidence from the pipe. There's a creek underneath there, and it was, it was set up such that a pipe would carry, it's a culvert, would carry the water through underneath Mount Shasta down, I think it's High Street there. So that's, that's failing. So worst case, it just collapses one day and somebody's driving over it and gets really hurt, and, and that would be a very bad thing. But an actual, an actual problem did occur two to three years ago where Public Works had to dig deep over there on the east side of the street to deal with erosion caused by the poor drainage system that then affected the water pipes in that area. And they were there for two, three, four weeks fixing that. And this is an example. That's, if we don't approve something like this, what we will be doing are disaster-related project-- project by project repairs. And, and you can go down that road, but I don't recommend we do that because some of these failures will lead to very expensive repairs that we may or may not have the money for and/or possibly lead to accidents where roads are caving in. So, and apparently there's damage to homes in some of these areas due to flooding. So.
And if I can add to that, on top of that, we've, we've had millions of dollars to replace sewer and water infrastructure, which is great. And, and that's all been grant money if.
Not just, no, the sewer, the sewer money for the sewer, the wastewater treatment plant and for the interceptor line, there was partial coverage by grants, but the majority of that is being covered by fees. For instance, the base fee for the sewage charge on your, on your bill, your utility bill from the, from the city is $71 and change. That's up a lot, but that's to cover the bonds for the wastewater treatment plant and the interceptor line, which combined, the combined cost of that project was over $30 million.
Which my, my point was though, if certain drainage impact projects do fail, some of that newer infrastructure may be in jeopardy.
Right, and we want to avoid that. That's one of the bad consequences of not fixing these things. So anyhow, the Coal Creek project's about $6 million. It's right in here. We have received a grant over $1.5 million to do the studies. The studies alone on these projects will seem exorbitant to you, but it's not unusual. All of these infrastructure projects that we've done here in the city, whether it's water or sewer, involve studies, planning, planning studies in the hundreds of thousands of dollars each time. And the estimate here is somewhere between $1.5 to $2 million to do all the studies and planning for the projects regarding drainage.
And they are getting cheaper.
All right, right. So I know there might be a bit of sticker shock on this. How can just changing pipes be so expensive? But as I've learned since I've been here since in 2016, it's just the way it is and it's not going to get cheaper. Period. So we move forward.
So thank you for putting it on the agenda.
All right, so since we don't need an approval, are we all satisfied to move forward? Okay. Lastly, but not leastly, agenda item number 12, discussion possible action, proposed additional chamber of commerce funding. Todd will introduce and Casey is in the audience, chamber president. So Casey, can you come up so that you are available for questions as we have them? Thank you.
Yes, so, excuse me. So right now, the chamber is, is, we get a $65,000 contribution a year from the city. A previous approved contract amount by council, by a previous city manager was to, on top of the $65,000, add 13% of TOT revenue onto the chamber's funding. And in the process of, from approval to that contract to signature by the chamber, that city manager removed the portion of adding that TOT percentage increase and didn't mention it and it wasn't caught before it was signed. So in discussions with Casey and with Kayla over at the chamber and looking at the profit and loss statements and the moves that they've made in terms of going from seven days a week to five days a week, they are requesting an additional $15,000 per year, which is a lot less expensive than if it was a percentage of TOT that was originally agreed upon. The, you know, on top of that, there are a lot of chambers of commerce that have moved towards going online because they don't have the level of foot traffic and it's basically ends up, a chamber ends up being a repository for literature of places to visit within a city. That is not our chamber of commerce. We have a lot of visitors coming through. We've dropped the number of hours. We have one person manning the chamber with some volunteer hours. We, we need to have an additional assistant and we need to provide the coverage if we want to continue to have tourists coming into the city.
Thank you. Any questions? Anything Casey you would like to add to what Todd has said?
I, I don't have anything to add to that.
All right, then we can open it up to public comment. Anyone in the audience wish to speak? Anyone online? Okay, we'll close public comment, back to count.
I have a question about it actually. So we give Cisco Economic Development 1% of the TOT. Is that still happening?
That's the T bid. No, that hasn't, no.
No, and so now a percentage of the TOT is going to the chamber or that wasn't done?
No, that was something that was agreed to with the chamber and there was a little bit of a bait and switch that happened and that never got into the contract with the chamber on, upon signature. And it shouldn't have been taken out. And it probably should have been caught by the person signing that agreement by the, on the chamber's end, but now here we are.
Okay, so are you proposing to take money out of the general fund to give to the chamber or to a percentage of the TOT to the chamber?
It's $15,000 of additional funding is on the agenda.
Out of the general fund?
Correct.
And how much of the TOT?
Rosalyn, keep in mind, this is public comment, not back and forth.
No, we're, well, I mean, there's questions about, well, what are you actually proposing to give them?
This is public comment.
Money. Okay, public comment. I have seen our Fourth of July celebration go downhill because of the charges that are being brought by the chamber and I really question about our funding that is limited to go to a chamber and it's questionable really what they're doing with it, advertising or what. So, I mean, there's questions and sorry that you don't have anyone to ask questions.
All right, we will close public comment, bring it back to council for discussion and motion.
Wait, can I add actually?
Yes.
One thing. So our contract is up for negotiation in June of 2024, so we're just asking temporarily for this funding until we can renegotiate our contract.
Gotcha. Yes, careful the lids off.
General fund.
I, I think it needs to be stated that this money is not going to the chamber, it's going to the Visitors Bureau.
Correct.
That's for, it's for funding for our staff.
Thank you.
Well, there's a big difference.
Oh, yeah. And, and TOT taxes are the general fund. It's one of three taxes that makes the general fund, sales, hotel and.
Property.
Property. It's been $65,000 a year for quite some time. We're looking to raise it to another 15. It's the Visitors Bureau. It's where people show up to get brochures and find out about our town. We also though, do have a 2% T bid. TOT tax, which is significant. It's $480,000 a year that we're contributing to that pot of countywide promotion. And then we also spend 30-ish grand a year for social media.
Ascension?
Yeah. It is a, it is an unknown for me about where's the right amount of money for us to spend to promote ourselves, to drive tourist traffic, which provides sales tax and TOT tax. It, it provides the money that, or, or in, in, in large part provides the money to run our town. That's how we pay for the, the general fund, just one last. About 75% of the general fund is salaries for the city government. That's by and large what you pay for. This is a small piece over on the side for the Visitors Center.
If I may add, the suggestion was made that, you know, the Visitors Bureau, the chamber, look at, ask for the T bid for additional funds and SEDC, Cisco Economic Development Commission Council, said that they have 10 grants, the small grants that they provide every year, but it's, it's not operating revenue and there's no guarantee that you get it.
Through the chair. I think Visitors Bureau is a very important part of our community. $15,000 is a small amount to ask to hopefully keep the door open seven days a week instead of five days a week. There are people who stop there all the time. It is the introduction to Mount Shasta and Mount Shasta area. If we're interested in tourism, it's certainly something that helps our tourist space. And I frankly think I would be supportive of, of a request that was higher than $15,000, but since no greater amount was requested, I'm certainly in favor of the $15,000.
There's a little hint to up the renegotiation. Yeah. All right, do we have a motion on the table?
Okay, so this is not a resolution in resolution format? Okay. I saw, move to approve the chamber's request of an increase of $15,000 for the months going forward through June 30th, 2024, from the general fund of Mount Shasta, City, City of Mount Shasta.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. All right, no outside reports. Future agenda items and meetings appearing on the agenda within 60 to 90 days. Selection of mayor and mayor pro tem, 11/27. Memorandum of understanding between city and friends of library for library operations to be determined. Discussion possible action, healthcare benefits for city council members. Discussion possible action, setting term limits for city council members. Discussion possible action, those are all to be determined. Increasing council compensation to be determined. Amendment for the Muni code camping ordinance to be determined. Discussion and possible action, McLeod Avenue parking prohibition to be determined. Discussion and possible action regarding the active transportation committee to be determined. Approval of funds to complete a survey of Washington Avenue to be determined. Amendment of parklet ordinance to be determined. Future agenda items over 90 days, discussion possible action, review chapter 13.95, extraction, exploitation of groundwater from the city of Mount Shasta. Anything else?
Well, do we put the 218 process with a, with a date, Todd, or just, it's just understood it's, it's a future agenda item and a rather large one?
A future agenda item, I.
Because the date, actually, since we're talking about four months from November 4th, going backwards, so October, so you have to have this basically by July first.
I will be working the election clerk for the calendar, the day that it comes out.
So, so future, well, just say.
Maybe just a placeholder for future items needed to move this along. I had a couple of items noted. One was the collaborative for fire prevention messaging that Pat Titus discussed as a future agenda item and adding sidewalks, no removal in the downtown district and that fee that they part as part of the business license, maybe taking a look at that, a fresh look at that. Thanks. Anything else? Anything else?
There's a lot on there.
All right, adjourned.